And we would like to welcome everyone to February 23rd, 2021 city council meeting. We've had the opportunity to have just gone through an hour and a half work session. So we're all warmed up, ready to go. I will call this meeting to order and call on our city recorder to do a roll call. Claudia?
Councilor Garvin?
Here.
Councilor Geary? Councilor Minky?
Here.
Councilor Chinoweth?
Here, and Zach is getting tea.
Thank you. Councilor Peralta?
Here.
Council President Drapkin?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. We'll just wait a moment for Claudia to get back over to the controls. Again, we are recording. This evening, we are going to have the pledge of allegiance. And could I have Council President Drapkin? Could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? We have a flag up now, so this will help us. So go ahead if you could do that for us, Remy.
Absolutely. Excuse me while I address my screen. I pledge allegiance to the United States.
America.
America.
Republic.
The Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Wow, we need to work on that.
I can't believe you remembered all the words.
We have the flag, you guys, so we're making progress. Thank you, Remy, for leading us in that.
Thank you so much for having a flag. I really appreciate it.
Yes. Tonight, our first item to work on tonight is a presentation. And we're going to have a presentation on climate plans. And we're going to call on Jeff to introduce Josh Proudfoot, a principal of Good Company, to present a presentation to us. And so Jeff will turn it over to you to introduce Josh.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you indicated, Josh Proudfoot is a principal of the Good Company. I had the privilege of working with Josh's firm when I was in Springfield. And we were a sustainable cities initiative year, sitting with the University of Oregon a few years ago. One of his former colleagues, Kelly Hale, led the effort to help the city of Springfield establish its first carbon footprint, among other things. She also taught a grad school class in the 3:00 PM program at the University of Oregon. Apropos of some of the conversations we've had around this issue over the last several months or so, as well as the proclamation that the council adopted a while back, we've asked Josh to come and talk a little bit with the council at a high level about climate planning and the kinds of sort of high-level impacts that he's seen communities consider and implement over time. I know Josh is going to share his screen and walk you through a brief PowerPoint and also be available to answer questions and participate in the discussion afterwards. So thank you, and Josh, I'll turn it over to you.
Oops, hang on one sec. So does everybody see my presentation?
Yes, Josh.
Okay, and you can hear me clearly.
Yep.
Let me move this. Sorry, I thought this was going to be preloaded, but I have this ready to go. Let me get it into that. Okay, hello, everybody. My name is Josh Proudfoot. I'm the founder and principal of Good Company, a 20-year-old consulting firm. This consulting firm that we have is focused on managing the triple bottom line. We serve infrastructure, food, and clean tech. And we do a lot of work with local governments. So I will keep it simple tonight and share kind of the basics of climate planning and let you know kind of what's in there. Okay, Good Company, again, we're a mission-driven, for-profit company. So we're not a not-for-profit. We're not a non-governmental organization. We're small for-profit. Okay, climate change. Why does it matter? Why make a plan? So I was thinking of all the different slides I could show folks without just trying to cause complete and total alarm, but also let people see what's coming. And I think this is one of the best possible things I can show you. So on the left-hand side of the screen, you see that in 2100, assuming things are going as they are, no change, Portland in the summertime is going to be like a very low, low, low southern end of Southern California diamond bar. So what does that mean? That means obviously the climate's changing. It doesn't mean it'll be inhospitable or impossible to live here. Obviously, a lot of people live in Southern California. But it will mean we're facing some very different conditions. On the right-hand side, there's some mapping from Oregon State's Climate Research Institute. And the bottom right-hand map shows where regional fire is going to be in 2060. I'm sorry I didn't label that with a date. But notice that the Willamette Valley, at the coast range, at the toe of the slope of the coast range, and in the Cascades, is looking at 400 to 500% fire increase by surface area. So I think everybody has a pretty good memory of what that smoke felt like. And I don't know if any of you have toured the highways where those fires have gone through. But what we're going to see is we're going to see a change in the conditions for the vegetation and for the people and the animals. And the way that that change in vegetation is going to start with is fire. And then hopefully, with human assist, we accelerate the growth of new species that can still have the same forest functions, water functions, et cetera, with Northern California species. So I put this up here just to call everybody's attention. This is what it's like in 2100, assuming not the worst-case scenario, but a current scenario. All right. Another thing that I thought might be useful to show is how water will come to Oregon. The good news is annually, water does not change over the next century. But the way it comes down into the state does change quite a bit. So snowpack, as indicated in those maps of Oregon and Washington on the left, in blue, that light blue, and that rain, or sorry, that red, which is mixed rain-snow, you'll notice that that's retreating out of the state. By 2040, the valley is basically without snow, which means that rain is going to come down in real time through the rivers and the stream networks. And we won't have that luxury of the delayed spring release and thaw that gives us so much water in the early part of the summer. So what we're going to see is the same amount of water, but it's going to come in a rough six-month season. And then there's going to be a rough, dry season following that. So now, what is the risk here? Well, one of the things we did with Milwaukee's Climate Action Plan, City of Milwaukee, is we tried to show worst-case scenario, meaning still not worst-case scenario, meaning going past the Paris Accord agreement, but being halfway between mitigation, mitigating what we're doing now, and being in that kind of we-keep-going-at-the-same-rate. So now Milwaukee has the unfortunate feature of being on a tidal river, which Portland is, you know, on the Willamette there, all the way up to the Clackamas Falls. So in a flood event, and this is expected to be what a 100-year flood event looks like, you're going to see that a good portion of Milwaukee is underwater. So what does that mean for McMinnville? What it means is your 100-year events are happening probably on a 20-year interval. And your 500-year events or 1,000-year events are happening on a 100-year interval. And I don't know if anybody remembers, but Houston had two major rain events in two years, back-to-back. I think it was three years ago. One of which, they had 62 inches of rain in a three-day period. The other one, they had over 40 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. So those are the most intense events, and those are the ones that people remember. But they're useful in the sense that the term 100-year flood or 100-year event has almost completely lost its meaning and is being redefined. So this is the reason to care, is if we mitigate our emissions and the rest of the world does their part too, we make things more as they are now and less change. Not to say we can't live in those, but the way that our cities and landforms have been built up have been built around a set of conditions that are going to be different in the future. A simple example of that. Summertime slopes for wastewater treatment plants that collect via gravity with more heat, more drought, less groundwater infiltration. And then all of a sudden, those pipes are at the wrong slope, and it doesn't move the things we want those wastewater pipes to move. Okay, so framework for plans on climate action plans. So there's kind of two things going on here. One is reducing greenhouse gases, which are the emissions that cause global warming or climate change. And those generally come from three places. Transportation, building energy, and embodied emissions in the making of food and goods and stuff. It's the stuff we buy. It's the stuff we bring home. It's the stuff we eat. And then there's adapting to future physical conditions, which I just spoke to, which is how are we going to reshape our economy? What are we going to do with our infrastructure? And what kind of emergency planning or emergency response should we have? Okay, so here's something on transportation. And what's the punchline? The punchline for making the change is EVs, telecommuting, which I think we're all getting the habit of, bikes, and inner-city transit. So some of this stuff works, and some of it doesn't work in all communities. But we're learning that the telecommuting works if we've got good fiber in rural areas. We're learning that EVs and their ranges work really well for everything other than major trips. In fact, they're most in their sweet spot in the daily commute. And the new EVs have an ever-further range. So the expectations out of those vehicles can change. But right now, those aren't made for going on long trips unless you have a very fancy one. The benefits that come from this are pretty obvious. You gain time. You save energy, you save cost. And then if you're doing active transport, there's good health benefits from working out or walking, riding. But also, there's air quality benefits in all of this. So transportation is one that, while it's going to be slow to switch over, there really is great hope for making change here. Okay, building energy. So this one is all the energy that we consume in buildings. So the first thing that we want to go to is low-carbon power. Now, as I understand it, McMinnville's public utility gets its energy from Bonneville, which means generally speaking, your community has good fortune compared to the rest of the United States and that a major source of emissions is mostly dealt with. It's not perfect. It's not zero, but it's really close. And it might be so close that it tells you to pay attention to other things for a while. But what are the things you can do that can make a difference here? Electrifying your heat and hot water is a good one. Duckless heat pumps and heat pump hot water. What's the word I'm looking for? Heater is not the right word, but tanks, thank you. Something to know here is about 50% of all natural gas use in a building is about heating the air. About 30% is heating the water. And then the rest goes to your dryer and your stove. So one of the things I say here is don't try and get people to give up their stoves. There's so much joy in that. And people love cooking. That's not where the scale is. Let's work on heat. Let's work on hot water first. Not to say that if you wanted everything perfect, you wouldn't do it. But to me, I just want to go for the scale first. So ductless heat pumps have improved a lot recently. And they can go down now to negative 10 degrees without adding an electric furnace, which is a huge energy hog and a major bill driver. So this is what on the household level or small building level, that's kind of the way we want to go. If you can't get off of all of your gas, you can, through Northwest Natural, buy what's called the Smart Energy Program, which is kind of like green power for gas. They go and buy credits or carbon offsets for every bit of emissions you put out. It's what we do on our bill. It's convenient. It's not very expensive, and it's a way to deal with it. LED lights are always great, and insulation's always great. You just don't want to pass up on the opportunity to have a well-insulated building. So again, here we have mostly the same things, safety and comfort, especially during hot and cold seasons. That insulation's going to be more and more meaningful, not just from an energy standpoint, but from a how are you doing during that heat wave standpoint. Okay. Food and goods consumption. So this one is tough. This one is tough because a big part of our economy is tied towards buying stuff. And a big part of our pleasure and just kind of how we seek comfort is in getting stuff. And you talk to people across all political stripes. One thing everybody says they have in common is we probably would do better off with more time and less stuff. Americans have a way of buying more stuff. And even if they have to work way harder and harder and harder and harder to buy the stuff, we still do it. Generally speaking, we want to be productive, but we don't want to put all that money into just objects that we store. So total cost of ownership accounting, this is kind of an interesting thing from a public standpoint, is whenever possible, don't just buy the cheapest on the front. Buy the best thing for the total cost. Because how many times have you bought that cheap thing only to have to repair it 20 times or have to feed it a ton of energy or whatever it is? I can remember the first time I bought a freezer. I bought a used freezer, which was a bad idea. Buy a new, energy-efficient one. So really, thinking about the cost of fuel and energy matters a lot. Right sizing matters too. Right? Don't buy a huge truck when all you need is a sedan. Buying recycled content, that matters a lot in commodity stuff. So if you're buying paper, if you're buying steel, if you're buying concrete or cement replacement, you want recycled content. Here's something that seems to be rebirthing, which is actually fixing things and not throwing things out. I am real happy. I don't know how the rest of the folks feel on this call. But one of the things I can't stand is finding out that to repair something is so hard to do and so expensive that it's cheaper to buy a new one and throw the thing out that only has one little problem to it. So this is a big thing that's being looked at a lot. And grant monies, we've seen, start moving towards repair shops, just in the way that storefront matching grants happen for downtown revitalization. There's an effort to help repair shops stay alive and thrive. And then, don't waste food. This is one of the weirdest things, but a full 35 to 40% of all the food produced in the United States is wasted. And a portion of that is happening at the retail places, but most of it's happening inside of our own households. And the good news is people are not wasting the protein food. They're not wasting ice cream. They're not wasting steak or fish. What they're wasting is produce more than anything and just letting stuff rot. So that's such a big deal that I went and read more about it. And the amount of food that's wasted in the United States would take 2/3 of California's entire surface area to grow that amount that we throw out every year. It would also be all of the water that's used in California, Texas, Colorado, and Utah just to make food that we throw out and don't use. So that's a really big place. It seems so weird, but that's a really big place to make a difference in climate change. Okay, adapting to future physical conditions. So these are the things that are going to show up. And I don't know if that was a hand raising for a question, but I'm happy to answer any questions either along the way or at the end. Is there a preference from the council?
We can, if you have specific questions for Josh, go ahead and address it. If not, we will have time at the end of his presentation.
Okay, and I'm three slides away from getting to the end. So we should be able to wrap it up. Okay, population growth. This one's really hard to predict, but we know that our modeling's wrong on this. The best economic studies I've seen have said that basically the Southern United States take a huge beating. And it's not just with temperatures that are uncomfortable. It's also cost of energy. It's also trying to stay cool. It's things like Phoenix Airport taking 350 flights out a year from the weather being so hot that they don't have thick enough air for the airplanes to get down the runway and off the ground by the time they get off. So they cancel, on average, 350 flights a year because it just gets too hot over 114. And some of their planes can't take off. They can only send off the smaller ones. It's weird things like that that are going to show up all over the place, that are going to make it irritating to live in a place. And finally, people will say, time to move north. We're already seeing that in ag and spades. And we're seeing a lot of migration north, but that might just be because of tech money in the Bay Area. Crop changes. Crop changes are a big deal. The heartland grains of corn and soy will not be able to grow by the end of the century. In the heartland, it will all move up into the Canadian plains. And similarly, a lot of the things in California that grow there will grow less because it's going to get hotter and drier. While in Oregon and Washington, we're going to have warmer conditions. We're going to have the same water. And if we can figure out how to hold on that water, agriculture is supposed to grow almost 50% in the Pacific Northwest over the next century. So there's a grand opportunity in that. Crop changes, you probably hear about grape varieties moving constantly from the south ever more north. And then forest species, I discussed about how fire is going to come in here and how we need to think about what trees are we going to plant so we still have shade, so we still have ecological function. And then probably the most obvious thing is work disruptions from fire, smoke, flood, heat, those kinds of things. Those are going to be more common, and we have to make sure that folks that are working outside are cared for or don't work that day. Okay, infrastructure. Flood management in stranded communities. This isn't just, hey, we've got water all around us. This could mean a major road 10 miles away is flooded out. And so part of the community is stranded, or we can't get to some other place. So that's how that's going to go. Landslides are real common. I was on a call the other day about fire cleanup along the McKenzie River. And because of the western fires, there is no native seedling supply large enough to start serving the fire areas because it happened across all these states. So we're looking at three years before we have seedlings to replant the slopes en masse that burned last summer. And then the question is, will we put the right trees in there and the ones that will endure the next regime? So landslides unfortunately are going to be a thing for the next couple of years, especially in the burn areas. Drinking water supply is threatened by fire, drought, and algae blooms. This is ever more common. And I believe you own a forest that produces your water supply. And this is one of those things that I would say put at the top of your list. It's going to be a delicate thing where you have to manage for fire. But you also need to manage your water supply watershed without filling it with sediment from logging or making that transition to other species. The transportation network loss, I have a story from TriMet that's interesting to hear. This isn't going to be your issue because I don't think you have any fixed guideway rail. But in one of the heat waves, the lines for the electric current overhead, what are called the catenary wires, they were designed to a temperature range so that they'd hang at just the right enough slack to keep pressure on the pads that get the electricity out. Unfortunately, that design value was for cooler temperatures than what they've been experiencing in these summer heat waves. And so when they have a heat wave, they have to run all their trains at 15 miles an hour to avoid losing contact with the cables which are hanging lower. Now, what that did is that made everybody late to work. And so they pulled all the small buses off the old routes onto the main corridors and served the downtown. Well, what they did was basically screw the poor people that needed the bus in the remote areas inadvertently in just trying to serve that demand by saying, hey, we're going to run these major corridors where the most employees running from A to B. But this is the way that climate change shows up in infrastructure. And it's going to show up in our daily lives. And it's not this catastrophic event all the time. It could be something as simple as now we got to run our trains at 15 miles an hour instead of 40. But it's going to show up in these lumpy ways. And this is why a good think through your public assets would be useful. Okay, emergency management. I think we've talked through these. New diseases, smoke and heat. And then those folks that are most vulnerable are the ones you want to look out for. So the folks that work out in the sun, the folks that work out in the heat are the ones that we got to look after for now. Mosquitoes have been interesting. We've had counts on those. And we're seeing sometimes in the last couple of years, three or four times the populations that were there 10 years ago. So the warmth makes a difference. Okay, so before I go to questions, I want to remind everybody that people live all over planet Earth, including the Sahara, and they get by. So it's not that all people are going to die. It's that the conditions are going to change. And some of the ways of living that are associated with the land and the trees and the forests and that kind of thing are going to change. But it's not all bleak. And in fact, the agricultural promise is very exciting. And likely, we're going to have population growth as people migrate north. So there's opportunity for growth of all different kinds. And then kind of a rethinking of what the ag-based industries are around here. But people still need food. And we're in a place that has a magic opportunity when it comes to agriculture. All right, I will close my mouth and answer questions upon command.
Well, thank you, Josh. Let's open it up to council for questions, Josh, on his presentation or any other questions you may have. I'll go ahead and open it up to council. Okay.
I'll see if I can get my face here. I'll see if I can get my face here again.
Any questions from council? Go ahead, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Josh, for the uh presentation. Um, in the uh notes that I made, there was one area, you started talking about population growth. Um, and I know it's probably uh too soon to tell. Um, you know where I'm going already.
Yeah. Urban growth boundaries?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I was actually going to ask you a question that's quite specific to um expansion of population and like the, the trends that we've seen in that um in the US. Uh, you know, I think we're all pretty familiar with the uh, uh population growth that um followed the Second World War, but um is there any predicted or do you um? Is there, are, are, is anybody yet talking about impacts from uh not baby boomers, but baby zoomers?
Um, uh, yes and no. So there's a uh, a big debate that is always raging about uh, will folks get population control understood? And how far do we go with that? And are you, are you wondering, is there a demographic cha- trend towards fewer children, or is that kind of where you're going with this?
I'm wondering about the impact of the pandemic on population growth.
I, I, I unfortunately can't speak to that. Um, I can speak to um the stressors on uh communities, especially near the equator and on population growth there. Um, it's, it's making a lot of people migrate. I mean, it, it always will. But I, I, I was at a climate conference in Los Angeles, and I asked them if they were ever wondering about um depopulation of their area, and they said, no, 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 we're getting inbound migration at such a high rate. Uh, we think we're gonna continually grow. And I asked them where the water was gonna come from because the conference was actually pointing out that LA came within um having only five percent of their normal water supply for a year. Um, but they just said migration north, migration north, migration north, and I know diseases are, are going that way too, not just with people, but just as the creatures kind of move up. So I'm not sure what will check it. I, I have, I have read that ten billion is the max world population that could ever be imagined uh to be sustained, but we're at seven billion and we're at one billion in eighteen seventy. And uh, the average person consumes a lot. The North American person has a carbon footprint of about twenty-four metric tons a year. The average Chinese person has a carbon footprint of about four metric tons a year. And the average Indian, uh, meaning from India, uh, has a carbon footprint of about one ton per year. So some of it's not about population, some of it's just about the way we live and the way we use our resources.
Okay, and your, thank you for that, and thank you for the data. Um, and your um comments were, were really about changes in uh area-specific population growth, not so much about um general world population growth and, and et cetera. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's tough though, because you look at, we're at a billion at eighteen seventy, and we have the Industrial Revolution, and all of a sudden, people can survive, get more comfortable, can a- actually their children can live longer lives, and so with that comfort gave a rise in population. And then that population asks for more stuff, and so that's been a big demand on our, our resources.
Other question?
Other question?
Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Joshua, uh, for the presentation. I thought you said you weren't gonna do the gloomy doomy one.
This is the jolly one. Actually, what I do wanna say, there is plenty of hope. I, I, and I've never been so excited about technology in my life. Let me just say that.
So that puts you in the cornucopia, right? Um, so uh, some specifics about climate action plans and how it relates to the city of McMenville, a, a, a city like the city of McMenville in specific and in general, um. I've read um through most of the ones that you've done in sort of our usual list of comparable cities, and then some, just some others around the state of Oregon. But maybe you could speak a little to the, the, the difference of climate action plans for spheres of influence, sort of what the city does, owns, operates, and controls uh, versus the community at large that is under the he- heading of the city of McMenville, right?
Yeah, that's a great question. So depending on who you talk to, the, the way to save everything is uh, either you're going at it with regulations and you're gonna make the whole world change immediately, or you're going at it with consumer power. So when most of our carbon footprint as a community is coming from our households, you gotta think about that. Right? We can choose green power, although I think your community already has low carbon power. Uh, as you can afford it and you replace your vehicles, you can get an ever more efficient vehicle. I don't think there's any mandate to immediately dump everything and buy everything new. Uh, there's even a tax credit for uh used EVs. So at the household level, you could change your energy, you could change your vehicle, you could change your heat. Uh, and we'd be most of the way there. You'd wanna pay attention to, you know, not wasting food and maybe even move your diet more towards uh plants, just in general, the more veggies you cram in your face, uh, the less of the more intense meat products that are in there. And I, I'm not a vegan, I'm not a vegetarian. Uh, but it's just, just basic data. Um, when you look at the city, I think the city has a small enough footprint that you could probably make some changes in your operations. But really, what are the things that the city helps influence or control for the whole community? So your water supply may be something you really wanna pay attention to. Uh, as I understand it, you own your watershed.
We do.
Okay, so that's a really important thing. Like, you know, eh, on the hierarchy of needs, it's, you know, food, water, shelter. So water, we gotta make sure is, is covered in there. Um, if you're getting into any of the other things, it's a cooperative effort. You do not have direct control. What you can do is you can engage with other entities and say, what can we do? And so one of the big discussions that's happening right now is about natural gas throughout the Northwest. Is can we make it so natural gas comes to our community with carbon offsets built in? That's, eh, people are talking about that everywhere, and they're also saying, hey, those that don't have the lucky Bonneville, Bonneville power are saying, hey, utility, can we get an all-green power package for our entire community as the default? Those things are happening, but those are negotiated, those are slow processes, and it takes a while to ma- to make all that happen. So what I'd say is, in your operations, make good choices when it's time to buy something new. Uh, think about the future and think about the uh vulnerabilities to your community, like drinking water supply, or maybe a major highway corridor that is far away from you, but actually matters a lot for, you know, I don't know, drive-through traffic or retail or something like that. And then think about how you can help the households. What is it that they need? And, you know, it might be as simple on a hot day of saying, hey, make sure, uh, if you work outside, make sure to take extra rest today and drink extra water, you know? There are things you can do, but again, this is a collective problem. It's not something where the city just waves its hands and magically everybody does what it wants them to do. So the only thing you can control is your operations directly. See where you can partner on the big things. See if there's some creative agreements that don't have to use force or regulatory uh power. And then also see what the community is ready to do. Um, your utility should be making money from the clean fuel standard for every electric car that gets plugged in. The utility can get uh credits through the regulatory program. EWEB just got its quarterly five hundred thousand dollar check for aggregating the data off of all the EVs in their, in their jurisdiction and selling those credits into the carbon trading bank. That's the kind of thing that you can participate in that would be great. Work with ETO, get heat pumps into people's houses, but it's a mix of control and influence, and it's more influence than anything. Does that help, Zach?
That, that does. I mean, you talk about electric, uh, converting to electricity, it mean, talk about a city, right, with the, the incentive to see savings and cut costs by investing in electricity away from gas. I mean, our, our Mack Water and Light rates, everyone in the city of McMenville knows, it's some of the lowest in the nation, so um, which makes, you know, payoff, uh, uh, if you, depending on how you look at it, right, versus, oh, if I, we're paying all this money in gas and fuel, now we're, now we're just paying that in costs of electricity to fuel the fleet, then, then it's the payoff.
Um, yeah, and what I'd say is, um, with cheap power, people save a lot of money in their fleets.
Yep.
There's a, there's a, a Nevada County Sheriff's Department that tried five Teslas that were at full price, and they still saved about seven grand a year. Because there's that much idling and you're keeping the police rides always ready to go at a moment's notice, and they're in service so many hours during the day. They were just, they just, they were saying, is it physically possible to make it work? And the savings came because they consume so much fuel in their duty cycle. So you never know what kind of surprise is waiting for you there.
Um, can you tell us a little bit about like what the path to a climate action plan looks like? How would we, you know, start and go from here to, to, to getting that to happen? What, what does that path look like? Both sort of a ti- timeline roughly and how that changes and what the process parts along the way would look like?
Yeah, so, so I gave you kind of the outline of what needs to be done. Like, here are the big headings. There's the reduce emissions, and there's getting ready to adapt to the future. Right? And then I gave you kind of the main buckets under each one of those. What you need to do is do some thinking for the city's ops and for the community. And just systematically ask yourself what is happening in each one of those, those places. Now, i- if you had the opportunity to do a, a community carbon footprint, that'd be good, but I don't, I would, don't recommend it if your budget is small and you really just need to get to action. So what I would do is I would look at those categories, and I'd set those up as rows on one hand of a table and as column headings. I'd have city operations, community, and then maybe s- household levels. But community is that, that gray zone where you have to partner with other major entities. And I'd go through there and say, okay, we know we need to do EVs, so what can we do to help make EVs happen? Right? And you get together with all the groups that do that and say, what can we do that to get, get more of those in our area? And it's by each one of those things, you kind of go to the experts and say, who should we bring to the table? And so when you make that plan, I don't recommend asking the whole community to come in with every single idea they've ever had about climate change because you don't end up with a lot of actionable stuff, and then you get a lot of people that say, hey, I gave you my best ideas and you're not doing any of them. What I think it's better to do is say, we know these things are important, what are your ideas about these things? Um, we just find that there's, you know, people get very excited about something, and then when they find out that that's near impossible to do, or it has no scale and it's super expensive, they get disappointed. You'd rather harness that energy on stuff that's possible. Is that, is that clear enough? I, I mean, it would take, it would take, you know, a lot of coordinated meetings with four or five people from the utility, the Energy Trust of Oregon, you know, maybe local contractors, you know, Home Builders Association to talk about what can we do better for our buildings in town, right? It's that, it's kind of that model.
Makes sense, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Uh, I had a question, uh, Mayor. Uh, Josh, I, I do appreciate your presentation, um, and the time that you've spent with us. Uh, I had a question. You had mentioned that protecting the city's watershed uh going forward should be a priority. Um, we have a, a forty thousand acre um public land, BLM owned land adjacent to our watershed that's not really well-maintained. Um, would that be the kind of thing that we might wanna target for, you know, pre- preserving that area around the watershed? Is that the kind of thing that you're referring to, to risk the risk of fire or?
Yeah, so, so the kind of, eh, I mean, I can think of a few meetings. We had an interesting meeting in Corvallis where the fire chief had never been put together with the brand-new water manager who had just been hired from out of town. And we're having this conversation, and the water manager really just, just knew that they had a forest. And the fire chief said, well, actually, I'm very concerned because there are these PUDs that are developing ever closer. And it's humans having fun on these back roads, you know, kids with firecrackers or whatever that might burn your whole system down. And it was so helpful for that water manager who was thinking, oh, we got plenty of storage to hear, oh, no, 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 actually, the threat might be well beyond our fence. Um, so, yeah, eh, you have to bring in multiple parties on that kind of thing, and when I think about drinking water discussions that um we had in Milwaukee, we had to get this area of drinking water supply managers, because there are multiple parties that have rights to the wells, and there's priority rights. And if Portland's watershed burned, they would have priority rights on water that they currently draw, don't draw, and they'd be drawing from that groundwater and displace all of these local communities, or they'd all be sharing that crisis together.
Wow.
But Milwaukee never understood that. They didn't understand that, that their, their system would be interfered with from an outside system. So that's where you have to look at some of the interdependencies. The um, the subway in New York City that got shut down during Superstorm Sandy. Uh, they had put in pumps all over their system to prevent flooding. And they were all diesel pumps. And uh, there's a huge push to improve air quality in the tunnels, and they electrified everything. And it never occurred to them that the power company might, their infrastructure might go down, and then they couldn't pump their own water. They had thought as far as, hey, we don't want this to flood in a major event, so we're putting in pumps. But they didn't guarantee their own power supply. So there's these nexuses of other agencies and other institutions that you really wanna engage. So if BLM has some land that looks like ripe for fire, you gotta talk to them, and maybe you build your own fire break. If, if they don't move with you.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, it looks like our time is uh well-spent, Josh, and thank you so very much. You know, I sit on the uh Commission for Mack Water and Light, and some of the things you're talking about is top priority for us. We do our own forestation up there. We're watching diligently. We have uh, we have a uh sixty-five hundred acre watershed that is eh fenced so that the people don't have access to it. Uh, we have cameras and we aggressively uh will uh prosecute anyone that's found on our property to, to um protect the watershed from chemicals and any other types of things, but more importantly, as we saw the wildfires this, this uh last little while, those are critical, because you lose your, you use, lose your growth, you lose your watershed. So, you know, and as I think, as uh, as Zach had indicated, we're the second lowest uh electric rates in this, in the state of Oregon. Ie, heat pumps are big, a big item here in McMenville. Uh, two years ago, through a grant through uh BPA, we were able to replace LED lights in uh seven hundred homes. We do that every two years. Uh, so there's a lot for us to be proud of. There's a lot for us to take, uh, do an assessment of what we are doing right. Um, as you'd indicated, being on uh Bonneville Water, ninety-seven percent of our, 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 our electric source is carbon-free. One place that we do have a little um, um generator is out at the landfill where we're, where we're taking the gases and burning those, and they'd have to be pumped someplace, so we're doing that, and that's a sustainable. And they'd have to be pumped someplace, so we're doing that and that's a sustainable source. So a lot of good things, um, I, it it helped me, from my perspective, look and say, there's a lot we can do. But there there ought to be an assessment of where, what we are doing well right now, I think, uh,
Yeah.
Another good starting point.
Yeah, it sounds like you have momentum on a couple of fronts. And that that's really, you you have to allow for acknowledging the good work you've already done. And I would say, um, connect with Eugene Water and Electric Board. Um, I'm sure you have some kind of, uh, arrangement, but they're doing the most aggressive research on protecting the water source.
Yeah, we have a great relationship with them right now and we meet with them at least twice a a year. And we're all a part of the, uh, the Public Power Association, both Oregon and Northwest and American Public Power. So we, I see, I see them at least twice a year.
Great, great. All right, well, um, I'm happy to answer questions in the future if you want to forward some by email. Um, uh, again, I I do want to say there's, there's real dire consequences if we don't act. But if we do act, I don't worry that humanity's going away. I just think we need to act. Um, and the fact that most of these things have, can be chosen by, you know, in our own household, uh, is really key. Um, so just go for the things that have scale and go for the things that are affordable and look to make smart decisions as you go. Um, but, uh, but as you replace equipment and that kind of thing, every choice should be very deliberate. All right, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to talk to everybody.
Yes. Uh, that takes us to our next area of discussion this evening is the discussion on our city manager's evaluation for, uh, performance for two thousand and twenty. So I'll call on Kylie to introduce, uh, Renata, uh, who is the, uh, Community Development Director for Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. And we've used them for the last couple of years to help us in this process. So Kylie and Renata, good to see you, Renata. It's great to have you here this evening. Go ahead, Kylie.
All right, um, so Renata, thanks for coming to our meeting tonight to lead the presentation on this evaluation. Um, as a reminder to councilors, uh, performance review serves to do a couple of different things. It evaluates, um, job performance. It also is an opportunity to offer feedback um, and to assist with any goal setting, which is exactly what you all did in responding to the survey that was sent out by the, um, Mid Willamette Valley COG. And so thank you for responding to that survey and providing, um, really clear feedback um, and advice for goal setting in the future for a city manager. And with that, I'll turn it over to Renata so she can lead the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks Kylie. Hello, Mayor and councilors. For those that don't know me, uh, I'm the Community Development Director at Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. Uh, we are a member services organization. I'm very pleased to report that we have one hundred percent membership of, um, from our region, uh, Marion Pope and Yamhill County, including some soil and water conservation districts, um, and the city of McMinnville. As Kylie mentioned, I think this is our third year in facilitating these reviews. Um, this is my first time, um, in the process and so I will, uh, for for McMinnville. And, um, in two thousand and twenty, I served as the Acting Director for the Council of Governments as we waited for the transition of our newest director. Um, I will note that he is on the call. His name is Scott Datsin and he's just listening in. This is his really first week and a half, um, uh, starting here at COG. So I hope that you all will have a chance to to meet with him soon. Um, so as was noted, um, Kylie, we, and and for the councilors, we sent the survey out and, uh, requested survey results last week of January. And our our job is to simply facilitate the process of, um, uh, collecting the data and meeting with you to facilitate the discussion. Um, and in addition, um, uh, the city manager, Jeff, has an opportunity to complete his own self-evaluation. So I'm looking on, uh, page twenty-two, starting twenty-two of the packet. I can screen share if you would like. I have it in front of me. But I'm, um, starting on page twenty-two of the packet, which has your survey results. Um, we had five, uh, respondents. There were four councilors and the mayor. On page twenty-two of the packet, you have who those survey respondents. I will, um, provide a little bit of description, um, on how to interpret the survey results. And then we'll talk about the process. Um, so looking on page, uh, let's see here, twenty-three and twenty-four, starting on the survey, what you're seeing is a, um, weighted average of the respondents. So five respondents from, uh, made up of the council. If there's a, not a response to one, if a councillor doesn't respond to one of the surveys or notes not observed, we remove that from the weighted average. So the weighted average that you're seeing and the color coding is your scores uh, or responses to the survey questions, which are fairly extensive. In addition, your city manager, Jeff Towery, has an opportunity to complete the survey as well. And so we keep that as a separate survey result. But we've noted where he has scored himself with the exact same questions via an an asterisk. So that's how the process, um, move moves forward. Um, you have those results in front of you. Um, I'll also note that the the process that we use is one that's, um, was developed by, you know, my predecessors, but really is modeled after, um, what's called the ICMA Manager Evaluations Handbook. That stands for International City County Managers Association Handbook. So it's a guidebook on, um, guiding councils, um, and city managers through the process or what we call Chief Executive Evaluation. So we've also assisted Yamhill County and their commissioners through this process of their chief executives. Um, and I was able to assist, um, and facilitate the process with the Confederative Tribes of Grand Ronde, um, in the in the past year. Um, so I I will summarize some of the results and then how I typically facilitate or see the discussion, um, go. So, um, as a council, you, uh, are reflecting a very positive review of your city manager. The average, uh, council ranking for the majority of areas is well above average, as you can see. There were no areas where the council average ranked below average for the evaluation this year. Um, the evaluation shows that the city manager's performance is in line with the council's expectations and that he's delivering on the priorities and goals. And as was noted, I understand that you're now going through the process of your goal setting for the the upcoming year, fiscal year. In, um, the city manager's Jeff's self-evaluation, he acknowledges the difficulty and strain of managing staff and meeting community and council needs through this pandemic as, uh, I think we've all experienced and and now have these Zoom meetings and and the the, uh, process of conducting council meetings, um, via Zoom these days. Um, looking forward, he notes that he's continued, um, council and executive team communication is noted as an important aspect. Adoption of the strategic plan and development of the fiscal year budget are important events, important events in maintaining success both for staff and for, um, city councils. And I I can note that, um, you know, the value that's placed on strategic planning and goal setting as a council for you all to unite, um, is an important aspect. But it really serves, um, as a staff person myself, to help guide your staff and and knowing where you as a council are are seeing your region go on on behalf of your residents. Um, so first, we complete the survey and you have those results in front of you. Uh, when reviewing the survey results as facilitators, uh, we look for outliers. Are there respondents to the survey, either council members, um, who don't seem to align with the their fellow councillors in their evaluations? Because if we start to see that, then that's a discussion point that we want to have a discussion. If you're giving, you know, the message, the same message, a unified message to your city manager, you can expect that they'll continue that path. But if you see outliers, um, or respondents that, you know, maybe someone doesn't feel, um, you know, certain goals are being met, then that's a, uh, a good time to, um, encourage discussion um, in a public setting to give that feedback to your city manager. Um, because otherwise you can't expect, um, you know, results or or change for that. Um, you know, I'm happy to report here that in this case, um, we're not seeing those outliers. It seems like the council and respondents are very unified, um, in the positive reviews. So, uh, you know, well done, Jeff, in 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 that. Um, in aspect two, um, w- when we look at the weighted average, so we're we're looking at those, um, outliers and we're also seeing, um, are there comments or concerns that are expressed, again, to facilitate the discussion? Um, the third aspect is I always like to give an opportunity, if if the council wishes, for the city manager an opportunity, um, to provide comment or feedback or why they may have provided a a self-evaluation, um, themselves. But I'm just here, you know, as a a member service to our members. It's a free service we provide. I am, uh, pleased to say that the council has chosen to use us, uh, in in the past three years for the process. Um, but with that, Mayor, um, I have no additional comments. I'm happy to take any questions you might have on the results or the presentation of the report. Um, but if, uh, your city manager would like, he can also have an opportunity to provide feedback to the group.
Thank you, Renata. And so again, are there any coun- councilors that have questions of this process? Uh, we've been using, uh, this process for, um, I thought it was, uh, this is our, well, this would be our third year. And it, to me, is so encompassing with the very specific questions of performance and then being able to get the, um, the 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 average of our council and then project that as to what Jeff feels his performances are. You know, the the written comments, I think, go a long way in giving some some structure to the ratings. And so, you know, I I just thank the COG for, uh, because I've been involved in giving, helping out, giving, uh, city managers probably for the last ten years. And prior to the COG, it was a, it was a different process. And I think this is much more complete and analytical in its approach. So again, I open it up for any questions from members of the council. Seeing none. Jeff, would you like, anything you'd like to share with, uh, with the council through this process?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, this is actually the fifth time we've used the COG for my performance evaluation. I was evaluated at six months and then, um, out on my annual anniversary. So this is the fourth year we've used the COG and, um, I won't hold Renata, uh, responsible for that because that guy who came before Scott is, I is is is, uh, the record keeper, I guess. Um, I'm honored and humbled to serve this community and this organization as your city manager. Um, I am always happy when I'm a little tougher on myself than you are on me. And I hope that, um, uh, uh, this sort of, um, relationship continues. I appreciate, um, the support and the constructive criticism, uh, and the guidance I receive. I think I'm able to translate that, um, through the organization into the community as well. I'm, uh, proud of, um, my ability to work with all of you and your predecessors and perhaps your successors, depending on how long all the rest of us are here. Um, I don't have anything specific other than to thank you, uh, for your support and your guidance and your, um, uh, constructive help. I want to also thank Renata and the team at the Council of Governments for providing, uh, great support to us on this issue and on, uh, a number of other, uh, fronts as well. And with that, I'll be hap- happy to either, uh, reflect with you to, um, on any comments that you may have or any additional questions that you may have of me. But thank you very much. I appreciate the support.
Again, any questions for Jeff? Again, in closing, uh, I I would like to just share a couple of things. How critical it is for us to take the time when we're doing this process. Uh, we have the responsibility of, uh, managing, uh, well, as Jeff indicated, we manage Jeff and we do reviews for Jeff and then the municipal, uh, judge. And we've not done that very successfully, so we'll need to maybe take a look at that. But, uh, again, this is our opportunity to, um, share with him what what our feel is and allow him to grow. And he grows by, uh, good, critical and, uh, and fair, uh, assessment of what he does. And so from my perspective, Jeff, congratulations. Uh, another year of of so many changing things. And your vision and your ability to allow us to even work on the strategic plan to the level that we were in tonight is, uh, is 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 great, uh, because I see us, uh, growing as a council and as a city. Um, and so with that being said, uh, Renata, did you have anything? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just if if you'll humor me, um, so I also want to thank, um, Jeff for, I I knew that during my tenure as as, um, Acting Director, that he was a leader from the region that I could call upon for support. Um, when we, um, as a, needed to take to the COG Board the, um, a resolution about closing our doors to the public in response to the pandemic, he, I phoned him and he had, um, offered to provide a sample of the work that you had done as a council and and allowed me to to share that and and use that as a model for myself. So thank you, Jeff. I want to thank the mayor and, um, the council for the leadership you've shown, um, in response to the pandemic. But also I, uh, as I, we do work in the Sandia Canyon, I know that all of the communities, including those in Yamhill County, really stood up to assist the Sandia Canyon through that, um, event and the ongoing recovery. And I do have to acknowledge, um, Councillor Peralta, who has served as the COG Board's Vice Chair in the previous year on our Executive Committee and is our incoming Chair for the COG Board. Uh, I've worked fairly closely with Councillor Peralta in the past year and I thank him for his leadership and assistance and really being available for me. Um, great community. And, uh, I also have to note that our annual meeting, which was delayed because of last week's storm event, is it, was it last week? Um, you you know, when folks, so many folks didn't have power and internet. So our event is rescheduled for March tenth and I hope that many of you are able to attend. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have. And thank you so much. It's nice to see everybody.
Thank you. Mayor? Go ahead, Sal.
I apologize. Before Renata takes off, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge her. Um, uh, at first, a lot of people, the context that we get to see Council of Governments is usually with these performance audits. But I wanted to make the point that it's also the, uh, Economic Development Agency for the region. And when Renata took over, uh, as interim director, uh, almost the very first thing she was hit with was COVID nineteen. And then she was hit with forest fires. And then she was hit with a hundred-year ice storm. Uh, in a, in a, in in a one-year period, that is more stress than anybody should be asked to bear. And she did it with grace and, uh, uh, availability to every community that was impacted. And I just want to say how much I appreciate her work.
Thank you, Sal, for that recognition. We we do appreciate, uh, the the help that the the COG gives us and the partnership that we see you as a, as a a total partnership to the city of McMinnville. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kylie, anything that you'd like to close with?
I had one quick little thing, more procedural about this. So typically, we try to do these, um, in fall. And given the weirdness of two thousand and twenty, the slip behind. So, um, I anticipate that we'll have another evaluation come up for Jeff. Um, probably late October, early November. So just be aware that that'll be a different, um, timeline for you guys.
Thank you, Kylie. Thank you, everyone. Uh, well, that now takes us to our comments from citizens. And this is the time where, uh, our citizens may speak on topics other than a matter in litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Uh, comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Uh, you can, uh, raise your hand and, uh, in the Zoom function. And, uh, we will then turn your, uh, mic on. Please announce your name and your address. Uh, and and then, uh, direct, uh, you can speak directly to the council on any items that you would have. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to let it be known, council, you have received, uh, two, um, letters, uh, to us. One from Jared, uh, Harney, who, uh, talks to us a little bit about the bottle, uh, redemption site. And then we've got, uh, Tynan Pierce, who, uh, just commented on a few of the items that we are going to be addressing tonight. So that is being read. So that is being read into the record and we've all received a copy of that. At this point, Claudia, do we have anyone that would like to address the council?
Yes, and I do want to state that these emails will be added to the amended packet tomorrow.
Okay.
First off, we have Ukiah Hallensteiner via Zoom.
Okay. Ukiah, good to see you again. You're, you're serving with us on a committee, but it's good to have you with us. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, hello. I'm Ukiah Hallensteiner, and I wanted to thank you for hosting Mr. Proudfoot from The Good Company. His specific diagnoses and solutions and your support of this plan fills me with hope. And while this plan is specific to McMinnville, I also want to acknowledge, acknowledge that climate change is a global issue. And what we do here at home in McMinnville is affecting people all over the world, even like whether we see them or not. And I know it probably feels like a lot of pressure to be holding the future of your children, your grandchildren and generations to come in your hands or your proposed plans. And I appreciate your courage to do what is right. Nine Oregonians died during the fires this fall. I hate to imagine what that can predict for this summer, next summer, and the decades to come. Thank you again for doing what is right by leading the way with this climate action plan.
Thank you, Ukiah. I know you've been a strong voice of the youth to us on this. And it's good to have Josh in front of us this evening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia, next?
Next, we have Sophia Hampton via Zoom.
Go ahead, Sophia. You're, you're not coming across. Is your volume down? I assure you that you're unmuted. Maybe you could call, maybe you could call in on your cell phone and we'll pick you up in just a few moments if we have others, because you're just not coming across. I don't know when you went into Zoom, if you hit audio. So you, there's a phone number you can call in and then we can, we can maybe pick you up from there. Claudia, any others?
No, it looks like Sophia was the last one.
Okay. Let's give her just a moment to see if she can connect on the phone.
Jeff, I don't know if my comment came through on your evaluation, but I also really appreciate the way you're so nice to my dad whenever you see him. It's just such a treat. You treat him so well.
I love Big Mike. He's awesome.
It's part because you flatter him by calling him Big Mike.
Mayor, while we wait for that other public comment, maybe councillor Geary could chime in on any insight he has on the bottle drop. I know councillor Peralta and myself both spent some pretty extensive time in the last couple of years trying to push them, but we just kept hearing that they're focusing on rule and more underserved areas. So I welcome any comments councillor Geary could share.
Yeah, Mayor, if you don't object, I'd be happy to.
Go ahead. And then Claudia, if, if Sophia comes back on, let me know.
She's on, but we can go ahead with councillor.
Well, why, why don't we go ahead? Yeah, why don't we go ahead and get Sophia? Sophia, if you're on, on the line with this, go ahead.
All right, can everyone hear me?
We can. Sorry that that didn't work.
Okay, thank you.
And so this will, this will be an opportunity for you to speak. Go ahead.
Yes, sorry about that. Thank you so much. I would just like to reiterate what Yuki was saying. I would like to express my gratitude specifically towards councillor Zach Geary for continued communication with myself as well as other youth who are invested in what the city is doing with the Climate Action Plan as well as city manager Jeff for communicating with us about the presentation tonight. I think that the presentation reinforced what we already know, that this Climate Action Plan is so important, not only for McMinnville, but for the entire world and for the current residents of this planet as well as the residents to come. So I would just like to again, express my gratitude and hope that we can continue to work on this Climate Action Plan for the city of McMinnville and really lead as an example and continue to do good in the world. So thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, that now takes us to, that takes us to advice and information. And we, this is where we're going to talk a little bit about our information this evening from our work session with Wendy. We've worked on updating our city council priorities and we need to approve those priorities to move forward with the goal-setting work. So I'm going to ask for a motion, update, to update the, the city council priorities list as presented at our work session this evening. I don't think we amended anything or removed anything. So it will be updating our city council priorities as presented. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a, a motion by Zach and a second by Chris. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The updated city council priority list passes unanimously six to zero. Now we need to do the final steps for the 2021 goal-setting from our work session. During this evening's work session with Wendy, we worked on a final step for the 2021 goal-set work. And we need to approve those final steps to move forward with the 2021 goal-setting work. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the final steps to the 2021 goal-setting as presented at our work session this evening. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a? I have a motion by Zach and a second by Adam. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Our final steps have been approved for the 2021 goal-setting process unanimously this evening, six to zero. With that being said, I will then open the discussion to city councillors to report on any of their board or committee assignments since our last meeting. I've got Chris at the top of my screen, so go ahead, Chris.
I have nothing to report from the two that I connected to. We haven't had a meeting since that day.
Thank you so very much. Zach?
I thought I was going to at least have a triscuit bite long report from you, dude. Come on.
I thought they'd be animal backers, but who?
Throw me out, okay?
Who's counting?
Trying to sneak one bite in.
Well, I saw you turn the camera off, so I knew that you were up to something, so I had to go quickly to give it back.
What's the old, the old baseball rule, the ball's going to go where the guy's least prepared for it?
That's right.
Okay. I think I successfully stalled long enough to finish my bite. I'll tack the bottle return thing on if that's fine. And I'll just try and breeze through that. If anyone has more information on that, they can call me or talk to me or we could do it again sometime. But Landscape Review Committee, we had two, had a meeting just last week, earlier this week, last week. Had two landscape plan reviews, one on Colvin Court, one on Alpha Drive, that went through. One of them was mostly, if not all, hand-drawn. And it brought up again the conversation around minimum standards of acceptability for a plan submitted to the Landscape Review Committee. So it brought that discussion back up. They additionally approved a work plan that included some things, most notably, real meaty work this year on, as a high priority, the mapping and understanding and proceeding on with what heritage trees we have, what's, what are our assets, kind of cataloging what those are and, and moving forward with methods to protect those, which was really good work. Otherwise, MACPAC, MACPAC is another one. They had no, we had no full meeting of the group since our last meeting. We have had the Pool and Aquatics Subcommittee, of which I am on, and met yesterday and formalized their recommendation to bring back to the full MACPAC Subcommittee for discussion and adoption. Additional themes and items we're going to discuss at the next meeting are related to the library and the senior center. Spend some time talking about those and those needs. Additionally, on the subject of MACPAC co-chair, Max Field and I, aided by staff, Anne Lane and Parks Director Muir are on the road, on the speaker's circuit, giving them the old one-two punch, out there talking to service groups and clubs about, about it, what our efforts are, where we're at, where we're going, and what it's all going to hopefully eventually lead to. If anyone wants to be a part of that, let me know. We can get you where we're going to be. You can jump in on that or we could look at a way to get that information back to this group. But I kind of do it every month here. Number three, the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rules Advisory Committee at the state level I sit on. We had a recent meeting. We talked a lot about process, our process for context, as well as we gave input as to what would success of the program look like? What, what, what would success look like if we got the rules in, in place and, and were able to bend the curve? So which was really fascinating discussion. And fourthly, McMinnville Active Transportation Concept Plan Public Advisory Committee met last week. That's where we're talking about the Highway, ODOT project, talking about the Highway 99 couplet and how dangerous that is for non-motorized traffic and what we could do to alleviate that. We reviewed and discussed three potential options of ways we can improve bike ped safety along that couplet. And we may move, Heather, you may have to jump in and help what the closure of that meeting was, because I'll fess up. About 14 minutes left in the meeting, my battery on the surface died and I wasn't able to meet the last of that. But I know a punchline to communicate out, which I can send the info and link out to Jeff, maybe to disseminate that information to everyone, is that there's going to be a digital open house on this website that I can't even say because it's just a bunch of numbers and symbols. But we can send that out between February 25th and March 11th. Sort of a public open house where you breeze through this website. You can understand what we're talking about and what the recommendation is. And then on March 4th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., there's a actual live stream real meeting where they're going to do more of that public open house, talk about their proposal, get public input, and, and that'll be recorded and then put up on that website. So I'll send that to Jeff to set out, to talk about what 99, Highway 99 is going to look like. And actually, it's got some recommendations to impact Davis and Evans Street to make a green way to get people off of 99 is the punchline there. And then lastly, the Bottle Redemption Center, we're with community member Jared Harney about discussing getting a Bottle Redemption Center here, what it takes. We sat with Eric Chambers from Oregon Bottle Redemption Center, who was super helpful in just talking me through the program. And then we've spent time with him talking about what two or three different types are. All, everything from plopping a shipping container down that is a deposit site that you could take bags to and they've got, you know, it's modified that you can scan your card and the little hatch opens and you throw your bags in the little hatch. Function, the feasibility of getting that. The second step is taking an existing retailer and modifying that retailer or remodeling it to, to create a redemption center inside of a, or adjacent to, or as an addition to, an existing retail center. And then the third and, and most grand would be an actual brick and mortar, full, full functioning Bottle Redemption Center like you'd see in Forest Grove or Salem, I think are the closest. Really, like the challenges of bringing any building to McMinnville is its space and, and function. I've, I've just taken it upon myself to constantly look at options and availabilities for things that are out there and send it over to Eric and he gets an analysis back on those. So it's really going to be paying attention to the market and what's out there and helping, helping keep our eyes out for what's available in McMinnville as potential sites and just making Oregon Bottle Redemption Center aware of it. And so they can move fast, kind of helping build capacity for them. It was, yeah, just some other interesting nuances about how this COVID-19 has affected the redemption center and retailers' liabilities and, and requirements on taking containers and not taking containers. And I think it's really, it's really put a burden on some retailers and really stressed people that haven't, that rely on the ability to return those containers in and not being able to. The other fascinating aspect that I'll close with is that, and again, I don't know, I didn't know much of any about this, these programs that they offer. But the green bags are for the single users, your family, right? The Gearys can have their green bags and drop off their green bags and get their money and Hiram can buy toys. The Blue Bag Program is the, is the fundraising nonprofit arm that, so Walnut City Music Festival can sign up for an account and have our code and put that code on a million blue bags. Give those out in the community. You fill those bags up and return those. That, that program, that Blue Bag Program of theirs has just been absolutely monumentally successful. And in fact, in their last quarter, they finally, they've had, they've had their first million-dollar quarter where they raised a million dollars of blue bags for nonprofits, which was just absolutely fantastic. And, oh, I guess the last one little thing is, a lot of, a lot of grocers and retailers have partnered with the Green Bag Redemption Profits to offer like 20% boost to those numbers. So right, if I have a hundred dollars with Bottle Redemption Center on my Bottle Redemption card, on my Bottle Redemption card, and I take it to Fred Meyer, that hundred dollars is actually a hundred and twenty dollars if I spend it at Fred Meyer. So there's all sorts of really cool programs that are going on that I, I really think it's a fantastic opportunity that would be great to have here. It's really going to be land constrained. So if you guys see anything, send it to me or send it to Oregon Bottle Redemption Center if you believe in the program.
Thank you for that report, Zach. Let's go over to Kelly.
Okay, finally. I've got a mostly report on Visit McMinnville. I have one other small report tonight. Our meeting was last Wednesday. And by the way, the timing of the meeting has changed from 9:30 to 3:00. So, or 3:30, I think. So what I'm reporting on now is mostly financial information. February 2021 should be the lowest point of the Visit McMinnville's fiscal year. Per the financial statements, which are usually a couple of months behind, revenue was budgeted $88,000 and ended up being $123,000. So that's a good thing. They've just received 400, that day of the meeting, they have received a $44,000 PPP fund, funding at the day of the meeting. Visit McMinnville is working towards $120,000 in reserves per the contract at the end of the fiscal year. It's been 75, I believe. There was a $50,000 worth of marketing expenses budgeted, which may or may not be spent. That's a flexible area in their budget because this year of COVID. Budgeting for Visit McMinnville revenue for the next year, we're already looking at our budget for next year, is probably going to be 60% of 2009's year, which was our last really high year. Media guest note was Scott the Golden Retriever, who has a following of 222,000 people. There's one new grant which has been applied for, for $15,000, which a large part of it will be spent for the Dine Out program. Dine Out is scheduled to begin in May and go through September. Excuse me. There will be, I assume, new barricades placed for the, to provide a sense of place on the streets of McMinnville. And also, per Travel Oregon, Visit McMinnville is targeting nearby targets such as Seattle, the Bay Area, and Southern Oregon, which are most likely to bring tourists with pent-up demand. So we're hopeful with that. And by the way, the ice storm did provide some good for somebody. Hotels were full. Briefly, there's a test kiosk, which I think is somewhere near Twist, the on third.
It is.
And then today, Scott, the mayor and I went and testified, well, we didn't go anywhere, but we were on Zoom for the Housing Committee for House Bill 2006 and House Bill 2004-3. House Bill 2006 eases the regulatory process to cite a shelter in a city because of the extreme need in Oregon and in our area. It also suggests, uh, it also suggests a car camping program, it's much like we have already implemented. House Bill two thousand four dash three proposes revenue grants for specific cities to develop navigation centers, combining low-barrier shelter facilities in combination with services for the homeless. McMinnville was one of the listed cities at one point five million dollars of funding. We use the successes from the modeling, uh, motelling program along with the barriers that McMinnville has struggled through as a basis for our testimony. Speaker Kotek strongly supports both these bills, and Representative Ron Noble made sure we were included with the one point five million, and that's it.
Thank you, Kelly, for that report. Uh, let's go down to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my view, I'm at the top of the screen, but I'll go with you. Starting with the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, our monthly meeting is tomorrow, you'll see a few items on the agenda here tonight, so I won't go over those because I'm sure you've all, uh, already reviewed them and will be going over them again. What is on our agenda for tomorrow is, um, uh, finalizing a recommendation to go to the Planning Commission on SROs, which is a single-room occupancy type of development. And I, I do, well, I guess we'll see how that goes, but, um, but that's been, uh, it's gone through many, um, uh, the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force has been working on it for a long time, um, and so I do think that that will be progressing to, um, the planning development, depending on how the, the, um, task force votes tomorrow. We also open all of those meetings now with agency reports from YCAP, the Housing Authority of Yamhill County, and from Champion Team, so, um, three of the major service providers to our unhoused community, um, and it's up to the discretion of those individual agencies what they are, uh, specifically reporting on, um, but then the, the task force also has an opportunity to ask questions of them. And then we'll be getting an, an update, um, on the two house bills that Councilor Menke just covered, um, uh, and, uh, having some continued discussion about that. So that's the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force. My, uh, we, we have set the date for our first DEI Advisory Committee meeting, um, that will be in March, and so we're working on the agenda for that. And then in my, uh, other, other things, um, uh, the Oregon Wine Board just concluded the, um, first completely virtual Oregon Wine Industry Symposium, which was a, a four-day event and one of the most robustly attended in its, its history. I had the, um, pleasure of moderating an event on, um, diversity, equity, inclusion, and on the return on investment to organizations that take the time and energy to invest in DEI work, um, and also to present Oregon's first-ever diversity survey, which was a project that I've been working on with, uh, Dr. Jeff Peterson at Linfield University, um, for about the last year and a half, but over the last number of months, we got the lift we needed from the Oregon Wine Board and from the Assemblage Symposium, um, to get that out and collect that data and present it. So those were both, uh, uh, um, pretty big things for a, a industry that has a, a large force here in our area. And then I also went, attended, the first is a neighborhood meeting that started, um, a while ago, probably a year ago, um, in the Granary District, um, and that, that group is formalizing, so I did go to their, um, meeting on February eleventh, I, I do operate a business in that area, um, I actually haven't attended any of the meetings, but I went just as an observer and to take notes and be able to report back here, um, and they're working on finalizing their bylaws, um, and they did also talk about individualized wayfinding for the area and decided to pause on that, um, knowing that McMinnville is going through its own rebranding process so that they can tie any of that in to the, the branding that McMinnville does. And then, um, let's see, uh, we heard, I won't, I won't report on the whole leadership roundtable, Mr. Mayor, because, uh, uh, I know you, you all as well, but, um, we did hear from Wendy Beliz at PGE today that, um, uh, as of Friday, um, there were less than five hundred people in Yamhill County that were without power, and my, while that, you could hear that number and take it in a different direction, say that there were five hundred people without power, the efforts of PGE to restore power, um, have been, they've been working around the clock, trying to restore power to the many, many, many people that, um, have been without power for great amounts of time, um, and, uh, I, um, Mr. Mayor, I'm correct, you, you, you're gonna have more from that, okay, then I will just stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go to Adam.
Yeah, wait, uh, this is Councilor Garvin, we haven't had any, uh, Airport Commission or YCOM board meetings, we were supposed to have a YCOM board meeting, but with the, uh, ice storm not too far off, YCOM decided to prep for the influx of calls they were gonna have during that time. We did have a brief email of some content that was gonna be discussed in that, part of which was a briefing on Pulse Point, is finally, um, getting through its first phase, and we still intend to go live with that, uh, throughout our YCOM partners this fiscal year. The total cost of that's a little over twenty thousand, which is covered in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget. Then we have some forty-two terabyte storage servers that need replaced, um, two of those gonna run about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so that's about all we had for YCOM and Airport Commission, we have a meeting, uh, next week on the second, so if anybody wants to chime in on the airport, we'll have our normal commission meeting, and then we'll also, um, continue that discussion on updating our standards out there, so anybody that wants to, you know, chime in on the direction the airport should go as far as rules and regulations, that's a great time to chime in on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And Sal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, Renata gave the main part of my report, which is that the ice storm, uh, resulted in the, uh, the cancellation or the, the delay of the annual meeting for the COG, which has been rescheduled, uh, for March tenth at six PM. Also, just of note, I had a question, and I saw you holding up a piece of pa, paper, Mr. Mayor, and that, uh, my question was gonna be, is that an emergency declaration, uh, for the city of McMinnville? I noticed that Yamhill County, uh, was part of the governor's emergency declaration, and I didn't know if McMinnville, uh, had sufficient damages to warrant such a declaration, and if so, wanted to maybe chat offline about reimbursable expenses.
Well, we, we do have the emergency declaration as it relates to the pandemic, uh, we've not talked about that from a, the ice storm piece at this point, uh, so maybe Jeff can address that in his report.
I would, I would just like to say that, um, visiting several of the parks, we have several, um, you know, three, four-hundred-year-old oaks down at Tice Park that are gonna be a substantial cost, and I know MAC Water and Light ate several costs in terms of doing repairs, uh, to power lines, and so I think that, uh, you know, once some kind of accounting is done with those costs, if they are reimbursable under an emergency declaration, I think we should consider that to get federal funds to offset those costs.
Thank you for that insight. From, from my perspective, uh, just two things, uh, um, meetings that I've been to, that I, members of, had an opportunity last Friday to attend the LOC Transportation Committee, and Mike Bisit and myself, uh, are on that committee with a number of others, and we received information, uh, that the state's going to receive a roughly, uh, uh, a fifty-five million dollar reimbursement for COVID as it relates to transportation, and about twenty-eight million of that's going to go to the large and small MPOs and the, the safe routes to schools, but the remaining, uh, dollar amounts, which is gonna be about, uh, twenty-seven million, are going to be go, going to, uh, the smaller cities and counties, and McMinnville is a part of that, and that's to replace monies, uh, that the pandemic, uh, had an effect on transportation, and i.e. we primarily are looking at, uh, the lack of travel, thus the impact that that's going to have on the state gas taxes, and so we're going to be getting some money to help replace some of those, uh, monies that we were going to lose, so that was a, a welcome conversation. OLC was representing us with the Department of Transportation, and Travis Brower was there, and we came up with a formula to, uh, to get those monies out, it needs to still go back to the OTC now, uh, to pass, but, uh, we may see some money coming from that perspective. This, this afternoon, we had our Yamhill Leadership Meeting, and we had Jody Christensen representing the governor on the call, and as of Friday, uh, we are going to be, Yamhill County, Polk, and Marion County are going to be moving from the extreme risk to the high risk, and, um, what I've been holding up is you can get this, and I can get this off to Claudia, uh, to get out, but it's the sector, uh, risk, uh, level guidance chart, and it tells us what things that we can now become involved in, uh, this coming Friday, which includes eating and drinking establishments. Again, indoor dining will be allowed at a twenty-five percent, uh, maximum with no more than fifty people, and it gets very specific, uh, you know, the party size and those types of things, but it also talks a little bit about in, indoor recreation and fitness establishments, um, indoor entertainment establishments, retail stores, and it just goes through and gives a greater detail. So we're, we're very excited to move to that next level, our, um, our incidences have been under, uh, five, we've been in the high fours, but that allows us for the last two weeks to, to move into this, uh, into this realm. We also had reports from, um, Wyden's Office today, we had, um, and, and the good work that our senators are doing on our behalf, uh, as it relates to housing, uh, entities and, and helping move us and connect us with partners out there, uh, and there'll be a full report tomorrow, uh, at the Affordable Housing Committee, and so those are the reports I had. So I'm going to now go and just go to, uh, staff, Amanda, again, I have you at the top, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, nothing to report.
Thank you. Kylie?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Thank you. Heather?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I want to let, um, everyone know that the Planning Department is gonna be sending out a press release requesting, um, volunteers to sit on a committee for our, to discuss and evaluate a rental inspection program, um, to bring a recommendation back to you as city council, this is based on your direction from last October. The intent of this committee is to spend the next year meeting and looking at best practices in other communities and the issues here in McMinnville, and drafting a program for McMinnville for you to consider. There is some misinformation on the street that it's, uh, uh, landlord tax that's being discussed, it's not what, what is being discussed, it is, it is a minimum standards of habitability for rentals and, um, and then how to do an inspection program relative to that. We are looking for the committee to be comprised of landlords and tenants, and also community stakeholders, and so we would, um, encourage anybody who's interested in applying to contact the Planning Department, we have applications available in, in both Spanish and English.
Thank you, Heather. Let's go to Jennifer.
Good evening, everyone, oh, sorry for that glare, that's terrible. So just wanted to let you know, we are just beginning to kind of get serious in the, um, budget development process, and I was just, I was so pleased to, um, be able to hear the presentation of Mr. Crawford and, um, from the Good Company, it just, my ears perk up whenever I hear anyone discussing the total cost of ownership of things, so, um, that's definitely something that, uh, we're looking at, and, um, just wanted to let you know, thanks so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. My understanding is Debbie McNermit there, representing the fire department at the community, uh, or at the civic call, Debbie?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. I just wanted to report, we don't have much, but as we all know, there was a big ice storm, and I wanted to put kudos out to our staff that worked, um, twenty-four hours a day, obviously, running call to call, um, and we, uh, our volunteers that came in and helped us provide service to our residents throughout the city. From, uh, two twelve to two fifteen, we ran a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty-seven calls for service, fifty-nine of those were power lines or electrical problems, three structure weaknesses or collapsed, meaning we had trees in two, I think it was two apartment buildings and one home, um, one explosion, which was a transformer, seventy-one EMS, um, calls which include vehicle accidents, two fires, one building and one RV, and the rest, the other thirty-one were miscellaneous, fire alarms and such like that. Without our volunteers, we did staff up, we knew the storm was coming, as everybody else did, and we had volunteers sign up to run twelve-hour shifts for us on a brush rig, which we determined could get around a lot quicker, um, during the storms in our engine, and also many other volunteers came in to support our staff, which ran a lot of calls twenty-four hours a day, so I'd like to thank all the staff and the volunteers for their service, and want to make you guys aware of what was going on from our end.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Do we have chief skills at the civic call?
We do.
Call on the chief. Thank you, chief, and then we'll go to Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, um, uh, first to respond to Councilor Peralta's, um, item on the damages related to the ice storm, we're still in the process of assessing those damages, uh, you've gotten a couple of written reports, uh, we'll get a final written report to you in the next few days. The state just extended the deadline, um, or did not extend the deadline to submit, uh, potential cost for reimbursement, but did technically extend the duration of the, uh, of the emergency declaration, we'll be able to rely on that should we have any eligible, um, costs eligible for reimbursement, uh, and so we'll, we'll be planning to quantify that and report back to you on the details there. The, my office has, uh, shared a couple of, uh, drafts of a memorandum of, of understanding back and forth with Linfield University, and I'm hopeful that we'll have, um, uh, specific information to share with the council in about a week or so. And, uh, finally, just a reminder that, um, one of the casualties of the ice storm was, uh, your council team building, we have now rescheduled that for, um, uh, the afternoon of March fifth in Civic Call, you'll be socially distanced, and, uh, Sarah Singer-Wilson will be with you from one to four PM next Friday, uh, and I don't have anything else to report, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. That takes us to item seven, which is our consent agenda, we have two items on that consent agenda, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash seven, which is, uh, extending the city's declaration of state of emergency, um, that originally was expressed in, uh, resolution twenty-twenty dash eighteen, and then an OLCC, uh, liquor license. Does any member of the council wish to remove anything off of that consent agenda? Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I move the, uh, adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
And do I have a second? Second. I have a, uh, a move by Sal and seconded by Zach, all in favor of, uh, the approving the consent agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, uh, indicate by saying nay. This evening, the consent agenda passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to, uh, an That takes us to an ordinance this evening, and we would like to consider the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance 5100. And does anyone object to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, then I will have the city attorney please read the ordinance into the record. Amanda?
This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 5100, and ordinance amending the McMinnville City Code to add Chapter 2.31, establishing the McMinnville Affordable Housing Committee as a permanent standing committee and specifying its operating provisions.
Thank you, Amanda. We'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Heather?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is coming from the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, which was first established by the City Council in 2016 via resolution to look at affordable housing issues in McMinnville and the city's role within them and what we can do to remove barriers. And recently, we had a conversation about the membership composition of the Affordable Housing Task Force. The original resolution had very specific slots that we were trying to fill on the task force, and we were struggling to fill all those slots with that type of specificity. We started talking about the need to expand the numbers on the task force and to make the slots a little less specific so that we could get, you know, interested parties involved in the task force. We've had a lot of interest in it, who can start helping us to move opportunities and programs forward. With that discussion, we then started having, we then started talking about, does this task force really, should it be a standing committee of the city at this point in time? Because it has been something that has been in effect for four years now, and it's not an issue that we see will go away anytime soon. So the Affordable Housing Task Force said, we would like to make a recommendation to the City Council that this become a standing committee as part of the city code, and then also to have the expansion of the membership by two members and have less specificity as to the specific roles for each member. The ordinance you have in front of you follows the same structure as our other committee ordinances that are in the city code. It does, what, it does provide that two city councils, two city councils will be members of this committee, which is a little different than our other committees, but that carries forward what was in the original resolution. So what we tried to do is bring forward the original intent and purpose of that resolution in 2016 and then structure it within our enabling ordinances for committees. It also has, it asks for nine members to be appointed by the City Council. And then, just like our other committees, it does have language about ex officio and liaisons. We do have a recommended amendment for you for some of the language relative to the liaisons that the city attorney sent out earlier today, so that we can simplify that language in the ordinance. And other than that, I think I'll just stand for questions if there's questions.
Council, do any of you have questions for Heather?
I do.
Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, Heather. My, just kind of curiosity question, and it may be standard language, but I'm just wanting to understand the purpose of it. In 2.32.070 Special Provisions, Section A, it reads, "The Affordable Housing Committee shall operate within the laws and guidelines of the federal government, state government, Yamhill County, and the city of McMinnville." And so I'm just curious as to why the phrasing of guidelines is in there and what that will end up putting us on the hook for in terms of what we're going to need to do with the federal government.
So I can answer why it's in there, and maybe the city attorney can ask, can answer the question about what it will put us on the hook for. So that is language that's been carried in our city code for our committees previously, and we've just carried it forward into this committee and other committees that we've established. We do have within our, most of our codes, the provision that we are operating under compliance with federal, state, and local guideline, local ordinances and laws and guidelines. I looked that up after Amanda had called me earlier today, is also in our zoning ordinances language. So I just, I just think that's a historical carryover for the city of McMinnville.
And I will just add to Counsel Chenoweth. As, you know, we have an obligation to comply with federal and state laws and regulations to the extent that they, either we're silent or they conflict with, you know, something that we have on the books. So it may come off as like, as potentially a little bit redundant, but I think the intent of it is just to, to reflect that requirement that we must follow federal and state laws in our work.
It's not the laws portion that bothers me. It's the guidelines, because that opens us up to all the administrative rules and anything else they put forward as guidelines. And that comes and goes with the whims of elected officials. So that's the terminology that I'm a little concerned about, what the ramifications of having that in any of our code are. And just because we've had it in previous committees, you know, I've been talking to you earlier, Amanda, I use that story about the woman cutting the ends off the roast. Just because we've done it ever, ever before, that doesn't follow that maybe that would be the best thing to be doing going forward. So I have some concerns about that. I, you know, it's not a hill to die on, but I do have some concerns there.
Would you be more comfortable if it said, so administrative rules in the state of Oregon are enacted laws, would you be more comfortable if it said regulations, laws and regulations?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, that would be, that would be an improvement. That'd be, that would be much better. Thank you. The second question I have, and I, this may be not one that we need to take our time with today, because this may be something more for Remy and for Counselor Menke. But when this first came to us, the first, it gave a list of, of specific organizations that were going to be listed as having seats at the table, so to speak. And what I noticed was not present at all was faith-based organizations or drug and alcohol groups that are working with, with the homeless community and try to help them. And so I wonder what we can do to actively encourage, like Provoking Hope or some other faith-based organizations to have a seat at the table. I know often we hear commentary that churches aren't doing enough to get involved, and this seems like a place where we could be reaching out to them. I know I spoke to Provoking Hope earlier today, and they would be interested in having a seat at the table and be willing to help.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Remy.
So first of all, I'm just going to go back to the beginning of your question. You said, when this originally came to us. And I just want to state that the formation of this committee did not come to us. We actively created this committee, and we're very thoughtful based on what was happening in the community at the time to respond to it. And really, the conversation, the precursor to the formation of this committee was actually what, something that was happening within the faith-based community in trying to create and support housing opportunities. And...
Can I pause you a second, Remy? When I said come to us, I meant for tonight's meeting. I apologize.
Okay. All right. Then the next thing that I want to say is throughout the life of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, which I've been the, I've been one of the council liaisons for the entire lifespan of this committee, so I can say without, without questioning that the request for, the request and response from faith-based organizations has been something that the committee has actively worked on. In fact, we had, we've had multiple invitations go out to the faith-based community, where we've had specific roundtable-type discussions. How we created that list, I would have to dig into notes or other people's memory boxes, but I think there was even one invitation that went out where we literally went through the, the Yellow Pages essentially, or, you know, the Google search, and we made sure that every single organization within our community received invitations. Beyond that, we do continue to work and consult with members of the faith-based community and to sometimes try to send out messaging through organizations and networks of the faith-based community. So for instance, we, or I will, I'll say for myself, you know, I'm in fairly regular contact with First Baptist, for, for instance. And, and we've had, oh, man, do you remember, Pastor Matt is, I can't remember the name of the church that he's at right now, but he's come to many meetings that we've had where we've been working additionally with Gospel Rescue Mission, who's a, who's a really regular, is a stakeholder that we recognize and not only has attended many meetings, but we've had a lot of, we've had involved in so much work that we've done, and then also relied on those networks to get information to and from the faith-based organizations. You know, Counselor Menke, who...
Alpharetta Chapel and the Church on the Hill both have attended our meetings and the homeless committee meetings that are subcommittee of this.
Yeah. So, so I think, I think that just from, I can see how, because there's not a, there hasn't previously been a line item that says faith-based organization that is not at all lacking outreach to or input from the faith-based community, maybe not from every single church, right? Because not every single faith-based organization has the capacity to have somebody attend meetings and give feedback, but it is absolutely a give and take, and the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force completely recognizes the work that's done within the faith-based community. We've also had meetings with St. Vincent de Paul on projects. Counselor Menke's looped in St. Barnabas and the Soup Kitchen. So there is, to try to go through four years of interaction with the faith-based community, I mean, I don't think we have enough time in this meeting. It is after 9:00 already.
It's been highly significant in the past, trust me. I've gone to most of the churches in town just on the car camping program, so. And I know Remy's done a tremendous amount of that work. But I think to Counselor Chenoweth's point, it's really relative, if I may, Counselor Chenoweth, to the language that's in the ordinance itself at 2.32.030 C3, where we list out some organizations. And that's, that's the part that's been amended after, after we got some feedback. The, the organizations that are in the amended section of this, this portion of the ordinance are those organizations where, whose primary service level and role is providing housing for lower and moderate income persons, or the mental health services, which is the Yamhill County Health and Human Services piece of it. And so that's why those four are sort of called out. But the, the language in the amended portion talks about such as and not exclusive to these types of organizations. Yeah, we've broadened the definition much, it's much broader now, so they would easily be part of it if they want to be.
Thank you, Heather, for clarifying for me. I, I hope I didn't put you on the defensive, Remy. That was certainly not my intent. Good. I just, like I said, I, I can tell you, just so you guys know, Provoking Hope is interested in being involved. So you can put that down. I did have a chat with them, and they have verified that they would love to be helpful if they can be.
And who was it that just came to a meeting two months ago, Heather, that had a project that was gearing up? Do you recall?
Oh, it's the church downtown on Third Street. I forgot. They have a sign out about their project. But to your point, Counselor Chenoweth, we'll reach out to Provoking Hope, because we now will have more openings on this new committee, Task Force Two Committee, that they can apply for.
Perfect. And, and I think you've addressed my point well, Counselor President, in, in laying out all that has been done and reaching out to the faith-based communities. They do seem like a natural fit to be helping here. And just seeing that list, it didn't include them. And so I was like, it kind of threw me sideways a little bit, but thank you. Everything's answered. I'm good. We don't have to keep going, because it's already after 9:00.
Perfect. And no problem, Counselor. I wasn't on the defensive. It was a good opportunity to share some of the outreach that's been done, and thank you.
So Heather, are we going to have a change from guidelines to regulation?
So that's up to the council. I don't think that's inappropriate to change it from guidelines to regulations.
Yeah, I would add that I, in the email that I sent out to council, I put in some proposed language for a motion if the, a counselor so chooses. They could include in that language an amendment to change it to from guidelines to regulation.
Okay. So where we are right now is I'm going to ask for a motion to pass Ordinance Number 5100 to a second reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll move as amended to a second reading.
I'll second it.
So Sal has made the motion, and Kelly has seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Mayor Hill? Was that the correct verbiage you needed, Amanda?
Yes. Yeah, Counselor Peralta, do you, are you, for the amendment, are you including both the change to 030C, or 030C3, and also the guideline to regulation?
Yes. Sorry for not being clear, Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Ordinance Number 5100 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will not ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 5100, and ordinance amending this McMinnville City Code to add Chapter 2.31, establishing the McMinnville Affordable Housing Committee as a permanent standing committee and specifying its operating provisions.
Thank you, Amanda. I'll ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 5100 as amended, and we have, it was sent out the verbiage to, to ask the motion, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass the second reading of Ordinance Number 5100 with the proposed amended language, Section 2.31.030 C3, previously provided by staff, and the change of language from guidelines to regulation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Remy and seconded by Kelly. All in, let's see, we will ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Yes.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Yes.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
And Counsel President Drapkin?
Aye.
Ordinance Number 5100 is adopted with a vote zero, six to zero unanimously, so thank you for that. That takes us now to a resolution, and we have a Resolution Number 202108, a resolution according, appointing a member of the Affordable Housing Task Force. And so I'll call on Heather to present.
Yes, so this actually needs to be amended as well, and I apologize for that. It should be the Affordable Housing Committee, which we just established. So this is a resolution appointing Yuya Matsuda to the Affordable Housing Committee. Yuya applied for this a couple of months ago and really was the one who stimulated the discussion that he would be a great addition to the, to the discussion for affordable housing, yet the way the slots for membership were so narrowly defined, we couldn't find a slot for him in that regard. So the chair and vice chair have reviewed the application and are making the recommendation to appoint.
Thank you. And Yuya is on the call at this time, but any discussion among the city councilors?
I'll say that I'm really excited to hopefully be welcoming Yuya to the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, other than his work with the, the housing authority... other than his work with the, the Housing Authority. He has a very interesting path to share with the city and all its residents. And if you haven't yet, you should totally Google the band The Slants. And I have sent YouTube links to so many people, including on this call. And, and I'm really excited to have you. I won't say in Star Trek, but maybe a little.
Thank you so much.
And we had just, we had just a great interview and just a, so much, so much to offer us in the areas that he specializes in. So we look forward to that. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution number 2021-8.
And I move to, or I want to make it a motion with the amendment as Heather suggested.
And do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2021-8 passes unanimously six to zero. This takes us to our last resolution this evening. And this is 9B. It's a Resolution 2021-9, a resolution to submit a letter of support for the Housing Authority of Yamhill County's funding request to the Oregon Housing and Community Services for affordable housing in McMinnville. I'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Heather?
Yes, so Mayor and councilors, this is coming to you as a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Task Force as well. It is a resolution providing a city council letter of support for a affordable housing project that the Housing Authority of Yamhill County is going to submit to Oregon Housing and Community Services for competitive, competitive funding program. And with those competitive funding programs, having local government support is very important in terms of showing that it has support from the community. So just to let you know, it's, the project itself is called Stratus Village. It is a proposed project of 200 units of affordable housing located on seven acres over on the south side of Highway 18 to the west of the Comfort Suites Hotel. We've been working with the Affordable Housing Task Force on this project for probably a little over a year now. And it came to you as city council as a amendment to a planned development that was on that site. And previous to finding that site, we had been working with the Affordable Housing Task Force for about the last three years, really, talking to them about the need for an affordable housing project in the McMinnville. And the reason for that is because we recently went through a housing needs analysis that's in draft form and will come to you here shortly this year. But the housing needs analysis showed us that over the next 20 years, by 2045, we will need 1,735 affordable housing units serving households in our community making 80% of average median income or less. So those are typically subsidized housing. Of that 1,735, we will need 1,024 of those units are for households making less than 50% of area median income. That's 22% of our future housing mix. In the next five years, between now and 2026, we will need 424 units of affordable housing serving community, serving households making 80% of average median income or less. And of those, 248 of them are serving households making less than 50%. So this 200-unit project is so important to this community in terms of providing needed housing, especially in the next five years. The, the funding program that the Housing Authority is going to apply for from the Oregon Housing and Community Services puts them into a bracket where they're competing with the metropolitan area for funds. So it's extremely competitive program. And we're hopeful that they are, will be successful with it. And if not this year, they will continue to apply until they are. And so that, after a discussion at the Affordable Housing Task Force about the need for this project and the value that a letter of support from city council brings to the Housing Authority's application, they took a vote and made a recommendation that you consider this resolution and letter of support for it. Also, I wanted to let you know, in last year, in February of 2020, we adopted a new action plan for affordable housing for our task force. And on that plan, number, the number two action was to support partners in our community who are pursuing affordable housing funds for their projects. And funds being lift funds and OHCS funds, much like what you see in front of you today. So this is also serving an adopted action in the action plan from that resolution, which is Resolution number 2020-08. Vicki, Vicki, I apologize because I probably get your last name wrong, but Vicki Y. Bargain is on the meeting as well as, and she is the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. And then Mike Andrews is also on the meeting. And he is the consultant who's working with them on the project and the application.
Thank you. Any questions for Heather from council? Chris?
What did you know? Just because I was unmuteing my mic?
You got it.
So I, I took the liberty of putting this out on, on Facebook today because I was curious to hear the input of the community. I know everybody, oh, Facebook, no, not that. And got overwhelming support. A couple of questions that came up though, that I did want to ask for the benefit of the community was what's the plan? There were some, there were some concerns about, you know, the lack of businesses out on that side of our town and how the isolation that those that are going to be put in this, that might end up in this housing, might feel at, with the current lack of development that we have. So how, how is that going to be resolved? And what is the long-term addressing of those needs? Services and the like?
So per our Development Code, we do have to do a evaluation of adjacency to services. And we do look for things such as food and public amenities, parks, things of that nature. So it does meet, it does tickle those criteria right now in terms of what's out there. However, with that said, nobody's saying that it has the best service support in that area. And so we are working with the community on a Three Mile Lane area plan. The Three Mile Lane area plan is identifying the need for more of those types of services and where they can be located and the properties that are available for that type of service. So actually, you as the city council will probably see this area plan come to you in the next year after we go through a, a public process with the Planning Commission to bring it forward. And it may have some rezones and comprehensive plan amendments associated with it.
And are we talking, are we talking predominantly? I'm sorry to cut you off. Were you going to say something else?
Yeah, so what I was going to say is the area plan is going into the deeper dive of identifying where, where the needs are relative to housing and businesses. And, and the deeper dive is looking at things like bike and pad connectivity and trails and parks, and then also supportive services such as food for the housing. We do have a lot of affordable housing projects out in the Three Mile Lane area because that's, that is where we have property available right now. And so we want to make sure we bring those services to bear there. There's also discussion of connecting with the business development. So I know that the Housing Authority has been in discussion with the hospital as a partner. And there's also another apartment complex that is planned for just south of this property. And so there's some dialogue there. And then the 200 acres of vacant land that's on the other side of the hospital, the eastern side of the hospital is currently in a master planning process as well.
And Heather, just to, to, to update Chris, we've had tremendous public hearing and meetings. Well, I won't call it public hearings, but a public meeting with input on that Three Mile Lane. And we've had a lot of the residents in that area come and share and see kind of what our vision might look like out in that area.
Yeah, and the Housing Authority could answer some questions specific to what they're going to provide onsite as part of the project as well.
And, and I'd love to hear that. What are, what are the, the, the units are we talking about? Are we talking about apartment complexes? Are we talking about, you know, individual, single, single-room housing kind of events? Or buildings? What are we, what are the structures?
It, it is apartment units. And Mike just unmuted himself, so he could probably explain it better.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name is Mike Andrews. I'm a development consultant with Structured Development Advisors. And I'm working with the Housing Authority on this project. Thank you for considering this, this letter and your support this evening. So as Heather said, the, the site is now owned by the Housing Authority. It's roughly a seven-acre site. And we're planning for 200 units on that site. The buildings themselves would be a series of, as we're currently designing, a series of three-story apartment buildings spread throughout the site in a way that has kind of an even distribution throughout the site. We've taken care to have the north side of our project that's visible from 18 or Stratus, have a, have a curb appeal and, and have kind of a visual presence that reflects the, the heritage and the, the context of, of the city that you view when you're driving up and down 18. Throughout the site, there'd be open space. And we've been working with the Planning Department and others in the city to, to come up with a specific plan that we, we would need to come back to you for another step in the, in the approval process through the, the land use entitlement process. But as we've envisioned it, it's three-story buildings with gable roofs. There's some architectural elements that kind of give a nod to the agricultural heritage of, of the community. So there's a community building that's, one of the buildings is just a community building. So there's no residents in it. And it has a decidedly kind of farming agricultural look to it. A little bit kind of lower, more obtuse, gable, big porches, just something that is kind of resemblance of the, of the character of the, of the community. Services on the site, we've been working with a variety of partners that would come onto the site to provide services. We're envisioning there being flex space in the community building. It wouldn't be permanently occupied by any one provider, but would accommodate a variety of providers that could come and go week to week, month to month, depending upon what it is that they do. We're aware of the location and the linkages of this site to other things like schools and grocery stores and things like that. We're appreciative of the fact that there's a bus stop nearby. We're aware of the, the service lead times of, of, of the bus system. And, and we're aware of sort of what it would be like to live on that site and where people would go to the drugstore or the grocery store. I can offer the Housing Authority spent some time looking for sites before they came to terms with, with the buyer whom they bought this property from back in the summer of last year. So while it's maybe not the 100% perfect site, we feel like it, it is a good site for, for multifamily residential housing. And as Heather said, we know there's going to be development south of us that was recently purchased. And there's some plans and there works by that developer. So there'll be more people living in that community, in that neighborhood, so to speak. So we, we're, we're very aware of, of how it will be for low-income people to live in this community and how they'll go about going to work or going to church or going to the grocery store or going wherever they go in the course of their, their, their day.
Could I ask a question, Mike?
Go ahead, Kelly.
I, I'm just curious, could you give some kind of an idea of how many bedrooms? You know, kind of a ratio of four-bedroom to three-bedroom to one-bedroom or whatever?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So there's a range of bedroom types going from studios to four-bedrooms. So it's a, we're anticipating that there may be some singles or individuals that, that live on the site. And we're certainly anticipating families and kids. So there is a range. We spent a lot of time trying to understand exactly where the demand is for affordable housing. You could make an argument that there's a demand in every, in every family size. But by, by looking at the Housing Authority's Section 8 waitlist, by looking at the waitlist for their existing properties, by talking to YCAP, talking to Virginia Garcia, other service providers that provide services to low-income people, it became clear that there was a larger demand for smaller bedroom sizes. So the units leaned towards the smaller bedroom size than the bigger bedroom size. But there is, we have studios through fours.
Is, is there, is there, in the, in the, and I, you know, this is just ignorance here, not knowing, but is there any plans for schools on that side of town at this point, Heather?
No, so there are no plans for schools on that side of the Yamhill Bridge. However, that site and the other housing that's located on that side of the Yamhill Bridge are in adjacency to the Sue Buell School. I, I think that's elementary school that they, that they would be going to. And then also the high school and middle schools.
Okay.
So this isn't the only housing that's in the Three Mile Lane area. We actually have significant residential development already occurring there.
Yeah, and that's part of the concern is there's not a lot of businesses that are going out there with services such as doctors. And while I guess PMC's out there, but there hasn't been a lot of develop out that way for, for services. And so there's some concern, there's no, there's no grocery store out that direction. There's no Quick Mart, there's nothing like that. And there was just some concern in the community when I posted this as to how are they going, when you're talking about folks that don't have a lot of income, how are they going to get access to those services? The other question that was brought up, and this would be more to Mike, I think, we put it in our, in our statement of support. But there was some concern that the, the phraseology that's within our statement of support might end up creating a barrier to some folks for, that needed the affordable housing. And that is, in addition to creating housing, we understand HAYC will focus on providing housing opportunities for communities of color that are disproportionately and historically denied access to housing. And of course, we know that individuals who are facing financial stress are of, not just of color, but they're also, they're, everybody can face that, right? So I, I hope that's not a limiting, as if we're making a preference toward only people of color. And the way that's phrasing, it kind of comes off that way. So there was some concern in the community that read that. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Yes, go. I know that's all I'd say. Let's go ahead and go to Mike and then Remy. Mike?
Thank you for, for asking the question. I think my first thought is that the, the statement is not intended to be limiting to, to any, any group or, or any type of family. The, the intent is to, I think, give some recognition to some of the historic challenges that communities of color have had in accessing and keeping housing. To a degree, this is also reflective of the direction that Oregon Housing is going. And I, I think it was in 2018 that Oregon Housing started a process to create a statewide housing plan. When that plan was completed, they intentionally led their list of priorities with a priority that reads equity and racial justice. So it, it is woven into the state's delivery of housing resources, this recognition that, that communities of color have been disproportionately impacted. That's not to say that, that, that there are communities that, 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 that impact doesn't exist across all communities. But I think that there's a recognition that, that communities of color have faced more of an impact than their percentage of the overall population reflects. So that, that's the intent of it, that is the spirit of it. It's the intent to, to not deny anyone access, but ensure that all have access.
Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mike. I think what I'm saying is really just an extension of what Mike is saying. But I just want to point out that disadvantaged white people are not erased by discussions of disadvantages that are facing people of color. You know, if we were to kind of tie this back to our last meeting in which we had a presentation from the Fair Housing Council, we can see some of these systemic causes and then how those systemic causes lead into systemic racism. And systemic racism is measurably impacting the health and wealth and safety really of, of millions of people of, of color. And so highlighting that and being intentional that we are accessing communities of color in addition to low-income white families or low-income white people is, is very important if we are going to actively dismantle systemic racism. But by no means are the needs of low-income white people not being addressed. But by no means are the needs of low-income white people not being addressed.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you. First, Mike, I, I want to thank you for your presentation. Love your sweatshirt, roll buffs. And I also wanted to thank and welcome Ms. Subargwen to the community. I knew your predecessor, we haven't met yet, but I want you to know that you're very welcome here and we appreciate having you in the position at Housing Authority of Yamhill County. My only comment is that I think that this letter is the least, the very least we can do. And I would encourage Housing Authority to come to us with more asks in the future, whether it's something along these lines or more significant asks in support of your efforts to provide affordable housing for the community. And I would, I think we've talked this issue to death personally. I would like to call the question.
So again, I'll just ask, any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-one dash nine. So Remy? And a second?
Second.
Chris? It has been moved and seconded by Remy and Chris. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution number twenty-two-one dash nine passes unanimously six to zero. I'd just like to thank the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. Vicki, we see you as a great partner. You've been in so many discussions with us. We want to support you and this will be very, if, if you're successful in getting this from the Oregon Housing Community Services in McMinnville, we're hoping and praying for that. So again, thank you for all of your hard work. That concludes our meeting this evening and so it is nine-thirty-two and I adjourned city council meeting. Thank you all.